Good evening and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for Monday, June 5th, 2023. The meeting will be televised, as usual, on Miami Valley Cable Council Cable Channel Number Six and streamed live over the Internet at mvcc.net. It will also be recorded and available for later viewing on mvcc.net. I would like to take the time to thank the Miami Valley Council for, Cable Council, for televising and taping tonight's meeting. Since this meeting is both audio and videotaped to form a complete record for possible appeal to City Council and/or the courts, it is important that anyone who wishes to address the commission to please come to the lectern down front, speak into the microphone, and give their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission is a volunteer independent body appointed by the council whose mission is to hear all bodies involved and subsequently make a motion to approve, deny, continue, or recommend the application. All action by the commission can be appealed to the City Council. At this moment, I'd like to introduce the members of the Planning Commission. To your extreme right is Ken Lackey, Assistant Secretary. Next is Carol Fisher, Secretary. She's followed by Connie Gahl, the Recording Secretary. I'm Ray Waskey, the Chairman, and to my right is Don Rethman, Vice Chairman. We also have a vacancy on the Planning Commission which the city will be filling soon. Members of our city staff present tonight are Ryan Holmesy, City Planner and Zoning Administrator. Under Old Business, the first item on tonight's agenda is approval of the minutes of the Commission's meeting of May 15th, 2023. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of this meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of May 15th, 2023. Mrs. Gahl, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Abstain.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. Before moving on, I'd like to ask for a motion to remove Item Number Three, Gateway Circle replat because the, this issue is not quite ready to be presented at tonight's meeting.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Gahl, can you take the roll, please?
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes. Turning to New Business, the second item on the agenda is a request for a conditional use approval for construction of an accessory storage building at 2100 East Stroop Road, Planning Case Number 23-010, and this is a public hearing. We'll begin with staff's presentation. Mr. Holmesy?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening. I will do my normal presentation. This is a conditional use, so I'll go through all the standards applicable specifically to funeral homes and then also the general conditional use criteria before getting into the discussion. I know there's some people here on behalf of the applicant, as well as the applicant, and I believe some neighbors are here as well. Whenever I present, there's always some pictures and maps on the screen. Just if, if anyone ends up speaking and they want me to refer back to a map or a picture that's on the screen, just let me know and I can, I can flip through the presentation while you're talking to the Planning Commission. So this particular project deals with the property at 2100 East Stroop. It's the southeast corner of the intersection of East Stroop and Woodman Drive. That property contains the Routsong Funeral Home, kind of in the northwest quadrant of that property. There's also two, there's also two single-family houses on that same lot, and the area in question is kind of the southeast corner here where the applicant is seeking to construct a storage building. There was a similar project before the Planning Commission, I believe in 2011, and this is kind of a continuation of that discussion. So the existing conditions of the area where they're proposing to build the structure is it's just a vacant piece of land. It's kind of quasi-naturalized. This is a picture looking south, kind of in the southern edge of the existing parking lot. Here's a portion of the existing parking lot looking kind of southeast from Woodman Drive. You can see the hedge that currently kind of divides the funeral home use from the residential use to the south. And one of the reasons they want to build this structure today is there's a small area where they store like vehicles and other equipment outside, kind of located east of the existing funeral home. This picture is looking north toward East Stroop. The funeral home is on the left side, and then some of the vehicles are on the right side of the picture here. They want to take some of those vehicles and keep them indoors instead of having to keep them outside. The entire parcel in question is zoned office. This is the zoning map here with the red outline depicting the subject site. One area that staff kind of mentioned is an area that needs to be kept, kept in the back of their mind while they're designing the site, assuming that the conditional use gets approved, is a portion of the south side of the property is it within, sits within the FEMA-designated 100-year floodplain. That's kind of that blue area. The orange area is the 500-year floodplain. But if they end up disturbing that area or doing any development in the area, they will, and that does include grading, they will need to meet the Kettering's Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. So as a part of their application, they did include a site plan. Whoops, went too far. They did include a site plan, and again, this review tonight is not necessarily this exact site plan. They can make some changes as long as those changes meet the code, but we kind of wanted to get an idea of what they wanted to do. So you can see the existing parking area kind of in the center of the screen. From there, they would build, they're proposing to build a new drive aisle kind of outlined in blue that would connect to the proposed building on the north and south sides of that building. They're proposing a couple carports that would measure of 36 feet deep by 14 feet wide. Those are outlined in orange, and in the red outlined area, that's the proposed enclosed garage structure that would measure 36 feet deep by 105 feet wide. Based on just some general discussions with the applicant, one change I know that they want to make to the site, to the plan, is to shift that building a little further to the east, which they can do. The requirement is that the, all structures on a funeral home property need to be at least 35 feet from any residential uses, and that particular property, part of that property to the east is just a piece of the church property, so it's a civic use. They can slide further to the east over there. It would still need to be screened and buffered, but they could move it further to the east. They can't move it any closer than 35 feet from the south lot line because that's where there's, there's a single-family house there. They would have to maintain that 35-foot buffer. Also, they did include some building elevations. Those are on the screen now, just kind of a general building, a general structure, brick veneer that would match the principal structure with the shingled roof that would also match the principal structure. They do show wood lap siding in the gable areas, and that wouldn't be permitted in the pattern district that they have to design in order to meet those standards. The applicant's been made aware of that. But one thing that staff did include in the packet that went out was the site plan and the building elevations with some comments, just kind of some hot, bless you, some, some high-level zoning comments, and we did share all of those with the applicant. Now getting on to the general conditional use review. As I've mentioned, funeral homes are allowable as a conditional use in the office zoning district, which requires a public hearing with the Planning Commission prior to initiating that use. This is considered a major change to an existing conditional use. On top of the conditional use standards, Chapter 1137 of the zoning code, which includes kind of some use-specific zoning standards, funeral homes do have four use-specific standards, one of which is that the minimum lot area is one acre. This site is over three acres, so it meets that. Letter B, all structures shall be located at least 35 feet from any residentially-used property excluding multi-unit dwelling units in the town center and neighborhood center pattern districts. Again, there is a house next door to the east, but that, that property ends and the church property starts a little further to the south, so they can slide within, I believe, 10 feet of that church property to the east. But what they have proposed meets Standard B. Standard C is not applicable to this request because they have direct access to two thoroughfare streets, and then Letter D deals with the general conditional use standards, which I'll get into now. And these standards can be found in Chapter 1153 of the Kettering Zoning Code in Section And Standard Number, Standard Number One in that, or I'm sorry, Letter A in that category is "The proposed conditional use shall comply with the applicable regulations of the zoning code," and I'll just read through the staff report at this point. Excuse me. "The proposed use is an allowable conditional use at this location and represents an expansion of an established use. The use has operated on the subject site for a number of years, and the operators are now seeking to install an accessory storage building to allow them to no longer have to rely on keeping vehicles and equipments outdoor, and equipment outdoors." I included some photographs in the report at their facilities. "Regarding any legal nonconformities with the site, since the proposed building expands the gross floor area of the use by 10% or more, any site-related nonconformities lose the right to continue and must be brought into compliance," and that's a standard within Section 1155.04.a.3 of the Kettering Zoning Code. "Based on a visit to the site and a cursory review of the existing site conditions, there are some screening and landscaping-related nonconformities that must be brought into compliance, and those are shown within Attachment D of the staff report." Standard B, the proposed conditional, so this requirement is conditionally satisfied. "Standard B, the proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located and shall have no more adverse effects on health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in the neighborhood or shall be no more interest to property or improvements in the neighborhood than would any other use permitted by right within the same zoning district. The proposed structure is, is large, being about 4,800 square feet, including two 504 square-foot carports, which can be argued would not fit in with the surrounding area. Staff is recommending conditions related to the size of the structure meant to mitigate potential negative impacts while also eliminating the storage areas that are not completely enclosed. In addition to these recommended conditions, in order for the proposal to proceed with construction, a landscaping and screening plan will have to be submitted that meets the applicable buffer yard requirements of the Kettering Zoning Code, which will further mitigate potential negative impacts. And it should be reiterated that the subject site is located in the office zoning district. As such, many uses, such as medical offices and professional offices, are permitted uses by right in the zoning district and would likely have a larger impact on adjoining properties due to items such as traffic generation and the general busyness of the property when compared to the proposed storage building." So this requirement is conditionally satisfied. Requirement C, adequate utility shall be provided. The existing utilities are adequate for the proposed use. This requirement is satisfied. Letter D, adequate measures shall be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to prevent traffic hazards and to prevent traffic congestion on public roads. This project is not expected to result in a substantial or any increase in traffic to or from the site. Further, there are no known issues with traffic circulation patterns to and from the site, so this requirement is satisfied. Letter E, the proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. The proposed use will not generate noxious or offensive vibration, odor, noise, dust, smoke, or gas, so this requirement is satisfied. Standard F, the proposed use shall not injure the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Provided that the recommended conditions are met, the proposed use will have no such impacts when compared to uses already permitted in the office zoning district." So this requirement is conditionally satisfied. Letter G, the proposed use shall not impede the orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted within the zoning district, and the proposed use will have no such effect, so this requirement is satisfied. Requirement H, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the proposed use shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Provided that the condition recommended by staff relating to the submittal of a stormwater manage, of stormwater management plans is met, this requirement will be satisfied. So this, this requirement is conditionally satisfied. And then Letter I, the public interest and welfare supporting the proposed use shall be sufficient to outweigh the individual interests that are adversely affected by the establishment of the proposed use. And again, the proposed use will have no such, will have no such adverse impacts that must be outweighed, so this requirement is satisfied. And staff does have a recommendation, but before getting to that, I would be happy to answer any questions. I know there's a few people here tonight who may want to speak, but before we do that, do you have any questions for me?
Does anyone on the commission have any questions for Mr. Holmesy?
I do not.
I do not.
No questions at this time.
I had just one question. What is the purpose of the carports that was in the proposed plan?
The, I'll let, just for more, I mean, I'll let them answer that as well, but my understanding is just for more, more room to store vehicles and equipment.
Oh, okay.
And by equipment, I mean like lawn equipment and like a snowplow for their parking lot and things like that.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay.
And the applicant said salt as well, or the property owner said salt as well.
Oh, salt, okay. Okay. So the applicant is, is here. Do you wish to speak? Does anyone wish to address the commission? Please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
My name is Paul Strebel. My residence is 3216 Lower Bellocrook Road, Bellocrook, Ohio, 45306. I'm the architect of record for the project and also the applicant for the owner, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have a question for the applicant?
No, I do not.
No, none?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming.
Property owner's here also.
Okay, Mr. Routsong.
No, not. Well, do you, do you want this thing put on the screen?
Yeah, let's, I think this is a prettier picture, that's why. I don't know, let's just work with this for, for a second, and if, if we want to, we can do that, okay?
Might need to find out who's anyways.
Okay, no big deal. All right, we'll just use what, good evening, I'm Tommy Routsong. I'm the owner of the property and also co-owners of, it's actually Routsong Realty that owns this property, and Routsong Funeral Home rents from Routsong Realty.
Mr. Routsong, did you give your address?
Oh, 2100 East Stroop Road. You want that one?
That's fine.
We could do that one.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a garage. That's what it is. I've talked to the church adjacent to, I'm pretty sure you guys are, are familiar that they're going to rezone their properties also to take it into the church properties. There, I've got a letter coming to you from the church council saying they do not disapprove of us moving the building within 10 feet of their area. We do have 12 houses and about two retail centers and other areas like two funeral homes and that kind of stuff, that we use this for our main, our main place. Right now, we're spending about $1,000, a little over $1,000 a month renting a storage unit over by Casano's, behind Casano's area back there. It's kind of a waste of money when we could have it all on our own property. Also, my maintenance man needs a place to put his welder, his tools, and that kind of stuff, workbenches and that kind of thing, so that's what one of the areas are going to be used for, too. Obviously, we need salt storage and that kind of stuff. We have a salt box on our trucks that we do all of our property with, and storage is kind of a pain leaving the salt outside. We have to cover it and that kind of stuff, so that's why we need the, the carports on the either side. Also, if you notice, we also have trailers that we use. We have a box trailer and a car trailer that we do store on-site there right now. We'd like to get that a little bit out of our parking lot and also in a more hidden area. One of the things that, and one of the improvements that we'd like to do is Paul Strebel came up with a better plan than this one. I actually like this better because of the access, but we could add, we have a plan. We didn't bring it tonight, like to submit it to you guys later on, that adds 25 parking spaces. We can, with retention done on the west side of the property is where we planned. Retention's really, I think, really critical that, that we have that, especially back close to a floodplain and that kind of thing. So we can do two, two things with the retention area, one of which is that we'll be able to screen ourselves to the west, east, east better, and also to the neighbors to the south. I'm sorry, I'm all screwed up in my directions. That would be to the south. The south is where the retention area is that we would be putting in, and that also, that buildup there would also help in the screening to those neighbors that are adjacent to the south. I don't, if you were, if you were there at Mayor Hartman's visitation, we had, we had, we had to have people go across the street. We have to do this quite a bit. We need that much parking sometimes, and we, our parking is all at one time. It's not necessarily over the course of the day and that kind of stuff. These 25, I think, spots would be, would help us to alleviate, move our employees' parking over there and that kind of stuff, maybe take a little pressure off of that, the parking demands that we have. It's at least a couple of times a month that we have to have people go across the street with visitations and that kind of stuff. So I'm concerned about people coming and crossing the street and that kind of stuff from the hardware store. What was that, Old Victanny's, wasn't it?
The old Bally's?
Bally's. It was an old Bally's that was across the street and that kind of thing. So it, it would be nice to have that. I think, again, we can come up with a storm retention calculation that would be able to support that also. Do you, folks, at this time, I'd like to yield and answer any questions that you or the public might have.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Routsong?
No.
I don't have any questions, but I think what's before us is the structure. Is that correct?
Well, that and...
Conditional use.
Conditional use of it, yeah.
I can add, I have a quick question about, you said, so based on what you said, are you saying that the parking will come later?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to get approval all up in front and, like I explained before, we've gone through a lot of zoning iterations over the years. We were the first P O D, and then they eliminated the P O D, and then when we approached this, what, back in '11 or whatever, they said, "Well, you can't put anything there because you don't have any zoning." We weren't registered in any of your zoning plans, so we worked it out that before everybody got lawyered up, that we would figure it out that, what the usage was for the entire, we, we zoned the whole area, including all the way down to the creek to the south. Before that, we had a 10, we had a 10-foot setback at that time for all of our, and we were told that that was going to be the, that's going to be in the new zoning that we got. So we said, "Okay, that's fine. Let's go with your new zoning." Well, it turns out that you did, and you had a different setback and stuff, so that's why I'm asking that we move the building back there. You know, I've been in front of the City Council several times on a City Beautiful Award. It doesn't help a funeral home if you don't have a well-taken care of place, and we've proven that over the years, that we like to take care of our places and that kind of stuff. So as far as screening and that kind of stuff, you know, it concerns us just as well as anybody else. We don't want people looking at a garage and that kind of stuff also. So we, we planned on having a garage in the original, of the funeral home. We needed it for space for casket rooms and for other areas and that kind of stuff, so we scalped that and we turned it into another reception area for our families that we serve and that kind of stuff. Just needed a square footage with the change that the consumer was doing at the time, so, okay? That made a short story long. Did I answer your question?
Well, yeah, I was more to say, one of the challenges with getting the, the parking tonight is the legal ad that went out for the modification of the conditional use referenced the garage.
Right.
The store equipment. It did not reference a parking expansion.
That's what I was going to say as well. I, I would rather we deal with parking at a later time rather than this meeting.
That's, as Chair, if that's what you'd like to do.
Well, Mr. Holmesy, comment on that?
That's fine, and I can also respond about the 10-foot setback to the east. I would need to look at the old zoning code, but they can't, the building can slide to the east toward the church property. It's a civic use, so the setback is much smaller. I believe the old zoning code, I would need to double-check. It did have a 35-foot setback from residentially-used properties. The church is unique because they own the house directly to the east, and that's on a separate parcel, but then the piece that directly abuts to the east is just a, it's a vacant lot, but it's a piece of the, I don't know if the church uses it for recreation, but it's a civic use, so they can slide the building to the east. They can't slide it to the south, so it can move under today's zoning.
Well, with, with the way the, the land is and all that kind of stuff, it would, it doesn't, we'd have more fill, more expenses and that kind of stuff, so I'm more interested in keeping it up there so I don't have to...
Keeping it north.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the way that the site slopes down, it makes sense to keep it to the north. And then just a little history, I did some research before this meeting. In 2011, there was an application received to build, it wasn't this exact plan, but it was similar to this, a storage building in that corner of the property. At one time, there was a pet crematorium idea of going there, and that was, I think, that was eliminated, and then it just became a storage building. And at that time, this was zoned E D O, an economic development overlay, and as we all know, those are good at generating development, but when you try to do new stuff, it's kind of a clunky process because you have to change the zoning to build relatively simple projects. So you have, you have a meeting with Planning Commission, public council, and it can take months to get approval for something like this. I don't know what happened with that. I don't think it was approved in 2011, but something, it was resurrected again in, I think, 2016, and that's when it was rezoned to office, out of the E D O. It was like E D O Two. It might, it might have been the first one. It was one of the first E D Os that we ever had, and I think today's zoning, I mean, they can slide it to the east, but it had zoning back then, just it was very process-heavy to get approval for the garage. It took four or five months to get that plan approved because you were modifying a zoning district. Now, it's just a conditional use. It's one meeting with the Planning Commission, meet the base zoning standards and any conditions the Planning Commission approves, and then you're good to go, so.
I think one of the, the improvements was that it was, the driveway to access that was kind of just off of the building. Paul came in with another plan that I thought was much better, and it didn't slope in and the building fit in a lot better, and so that's why he changed the driveway to be more to the west and, and make another cut there, but you know, we're going to lose some parking spaces there and that kind of stuff, and it's kind of what we need to make up because we can't afford to lose many parking spaces. All right? Any other questions? All right. Thank you to staff and also to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Routsong. The other question I did have, Mr. Holmesy, was in the staff report, the, and what's included in the motion was the structure size, which would, as I understand, would... as I understand, would exclude the carports. Is that correct?
Based on that recommendation, and that was kind of covered in, in some of the report. It's an office zoning district, so it's often that you have like a accessory storage building for your lot, whoops, for a lot maintenance and things like that, but it ought to be inside. That plan on the screen now has the two 14 by 36 carports, so a little more than 1,000 square feet of exterior storage space is not necessarily in character with a office zoning district. So that's, so the recommendation does include getting rid of the carports and then keeping the size of the structure. A little bit, it's at 3,900 square feet, which is a little bit bigger than what the enclosed area is. And that's kind of in line with the, the former project. I believe that building was 3,600 square feet or something like 3,700 square feet. And I think staff recommended approval of a, of a 4,000 square foot building. But again, the, the minute record back, I can't really tell if that was ever approved or was just recommended, and then the project was abandoned, and it never went to a vote. I don't know for sure. But yes, the current staff recommendation does modify the plan to not have exterior storage areas.
So, okay, so I think, so what I'm hearing is that carports are not part of this plan that we would be recommending for approval. Is that right?
That's not, they're not, they wouldn't be a part of the staff recommendation.
Right. Okay. That's, so Mr. Rautsong, are you okay with that?
I'm, I'm not really willing to move on the, on the carports because I think it's a better storage area for, you know, box trailers and things of that sort. And we're, the inside area, we are going to put some heat in there of some sort, so the snow melts off somewhere. I need to keep the garage somewhere around 40 degrees or so, so the snow melts off of our cars in the, in the wintertime and that kind of stuff. But our, our wish is to have those carports as a part of it, and that's how we'd like to submit, submit to you folks about that.
Well, any comments from the commission? It seems like we're at a bit of an impasse on this.
There's other people here. Let's hear what everybody else has to say first before we get into-
Thank you, Mr. Rethman. You're right.
Discussions.
Quite right. Does anyone else care to address the commission on this subject? Okay. Seeing none. So going back to your staff recommendations, Mr. Holmesy?
Do you just want me to read the recommendation, or do we want to talk about the?
Well, well, we can talk about this. I think we're, we're in the middle of discussion. Then we can get your staff recommendation. Then we'll close the public hearing.
That'd be fine with me. I just, I don't, I think particularly on that south side there, having a 36-foot deep by 14-foot wide, that's 500, about 504 square foot open storage area, is not ideal. I don't know if there's a way to keep just the one to the north, because if you look at the elevations, there's, it's kind of built in. I mean, this is-
The one to the north is kind of buried into the ground, right?
Yeah, it's more buried into the ground. According to this, the planning commission is not necessarily voting on this plan, but the concept plans that we got does show that carport kind of being more buried into the hill, which will effectively screen it. We could add a condition about screening it more, but I think that having a carport that large on the south side nearest that house is not ideal. To the north, I get the, especially a box truck, you, it's a little hard to design a garage door to fit those because they're usually about eight feet tall, give or take. So that's my general reaction to that comment. Now, the condition about the size of the structure, not being over 3,900, 3,900 square feet, off the top of my head, I think that the enclosed parts of this building are about 37.
80.
It's 3,700 square feet, roughly, 105 by 36. So if they want to keep that carport to the north, the commission would have to tweak that, what is it, the, the third condition to make it about 4,400 square feet? If you're gonna-
You'll need to come to the lectern.
Okay. So to satisfy staff's need for the one to the south, would you accept screening or maybe a veneer to the outside of that to, to match it or something of that sort? You know what I'm trying to say here? You're saying that, you know, so you can't see the box trucks or the, the other? In other words, we could put some kind of a lattice down on that side or on the, also on the east side or something of that sort? You know what, but it would still be open? Kind of like a louver effect, you know, a louver window like thing?
I mean, that's what I was going to suggest, given the opportunity to come in, is that in terms of having unconditioned storage space to be able to create a screen, you know, type thing, louvers, whatever, that's obviously in keeping with the architecture of this building and, and the main building.
Well, one of the, if it's something that is going to, if that's going to be screened, a louver wouldn't ma, it'd have to be like some kind of veneer that matches the building. Now, one thing I wanted to comment on from an earlier comment is whether or not the, if the building is going to slide to the east.
Okay, I'm with you.
I know that, I know that the church might consolidate these properties together, but there's still, they still have a house right. Currently, it's a, this property where the house sits ends about, I don't know, like, right here. And then back here, you just have vacant piece of property the church owns. If the building isn't squeezed a little bit, when you slide it to the east, it will fall within that 35-foot separation from that, that house that the church owns. The church can be okay with it sliding that way all they want, but that doesn't change the standard that if you have a residential use, it needs to be 30, the structure needs to be 35 feet away.
So the structure would be probably within, I would agree, it's possible it would be 35 feet from the storage shed that they have. Is that correct?
No, there, it's from the property that contains the house right.
So you have to go from the property line or from the house?
From the property line.
Okay. I concur. Probably would be closer to that, 35 feet.
I mean, it, it, this is 35 feet. I wish this would, had a laser pointer. This is 35 feet today. So if the, take, take the same size of that building and slide it 25 feet over to be 10 feet away, it would definitely fall within 35 feet of this property here, at least this corner. And then you're getting into a scenario where you angle it, which wouldn't be, design-wise, it wouldn't look right.
Well, right now, that, that, in that corner, they have, they have storaged a, they have their RV trailer there, and they have their garage and that kind of thing. If you got a, you got a satellite of that?
Yeah, we do. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what they have on that property, but I can show you more right here. This is the property that contains the house. So they need to be 35 feet from this property. And that lot line ends like right here. So it's actually a little south of the parking lot. So if, if the building isn't squeezed a little bit to be not so wide, it can't shift to the east without having to be angled to meet that 35-foot separation. And design-wise, that wouldn't look right. So I think the building needs to be a little bit narrow, like a, not so wide, and then it can more easily shift over that way.
Here is the issue on, on wide. One of our, our funeral coaches are 24 feet, 25 feet in distance. And, and, and to try to be politically correct here, a lot of the guys that work for us are elder, elderly gentlemen that-
I'm not, I'm not talking about the depth of the building. I'm talking about how long-
He's basically the height, if you're looking at it in the plan, the long dimension.
North and south.
If we reduce the long dimension, then if it shifts over to, for a 10-foot setback, then that, and you'll just need to look at that where that property line is, that you can stay 35 feet off that adjacent residential property line, still slide it over to give you more flexibility to-
Otherwise, we'd have to go to council to get a variance?
There's a B Z A.
No, the cha, the challenge is, we've had a, it's not, not with this same exact project, but these standards here in section, in chapter 1137 of the zoning code, you can't get variances to these because that's considered a use variance. So it would require a change to the zoning code.
Oh, okay. You can't get variances to your zoning codes?
You can get variances to dimensional things, but these are use-specific, so you can't get variances to these because it's considered a use variance. We had a-
So you'd have to get a use variance versus a-
Use, we don't do, use variances aren't legal in catering.
You'd need to change the-
It would require a change to the zoning code, or the church, or the church could replat their property to shift that lot line. Whoops.
Yep. I see what you're saying. Because that lines up-
Or they could take the lot line and shift it north, but that, the church would have to replat their property. That's an option, too.
I'll talk to them about that.
Okay.
But it, there's a lot of items that I wasn't, just based on the discussion back tonight, there's a lot of items that might change based on the plan that went out. So it might, I mean, planning commission can make a decision based on what we talked about tonight, what we're going to continue to talk about, but it might make sense to allow the applicant time to turn in some other information to find out what the church can do because the, in terms of the parking. But-
So, so I'm pleased that staff wants to recommend that we can move within 10 feet of that eastern, eastern line. I think we have to do some more research about, about that 35 setback off of that zoning line. Let me talk to the church also. I know they, I'm, I'm sure, when talking to the pastor, they had, and he talked to a lot of the church council, they didn't have any problem with us. And I showed him these dimensions and all that kind of stuff and, and what we wanted to do. So would that please the committee and that kind of stuff, if I got recommendations from, or a letter from the church and that kind of stuff?
Yes. And actually, Mr. Rautsong, we have a Plan B motion.
A Plan B motion?
Yes, we do.
Okay. What is Plan B motion?
Oh, you'll, you'll hear it in a moment. But first, we have to close the public hearing.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I can-
Do we have any further comment from the commission?
Mr. Holmesy had something.
Mr. Holmesy?
Yeah, I was going to clarify, getting a, if they want to shift the building to the east, like, a letter from, even, a letter from the church won't allow them to violate that 35-foot setback from the lot that contains the house.
Right.
Because, just to clarify why that is, it's not legal to let your neighbors determine what you can do with your property. You either meet the code or you don't. Because the opposite could be true. They could have a horrible relationship with the church, and they'd be like, I'm not even okay with an 80-foot setback. And then we can't give the, the neighboring property the ability to control how they develop their property. And that's a two-way street. It goes both ways. But if the, if the church is talking about replating their property, there, it, there would be a way to take that, again, it wouldn't be a cheap survey to do, but it could be possible to take this lot line here, the southern end of where that house is, and shift it north. So then this property, so then combine part of that property with the main church property, and then it becomes a funeral home next to a church, which is a civic use, and they can be closer than 35 feet away. If the church gives them a letter that says they're okay with them getting within 35 feet of this property here, it doesn't give us the ability to approve it. Again, it's a two-way street. If the church said, we're absolutely not okay with it, it would be the same way. They need to meet the, whatever the zoning code requirements are.
So, I mean, it makes sense. Both of those houses are used for their, people that are, what do I want to say? The, the- Mission. Thank you. For their mission homes and that kind of thing. So I, as I understand it, their plan is to take and absorb all of their, their properties into the church property. Is that possible?
Yeah. I mean, they can consolidate all the properties together. Ideally, they would keep, in terms, in terms of the, how that would work, if they, if they merged the house with the church property, it probably, it would become kind of an accessory use. And then I think that the building could shift to the east even with that house being there.
So in other words, those lines would go away if the church took off, took all those properties? Okay.
That's, that's mine. I would have to double check on the 35-foot setback. But either way, by modifying the lot lines here, there's a way to allow that building to go further to the east.
Very good. Thank you.
I just need to know exactly whether that house will sit on its own property, just a little bit smaller than what it is today, or it would be a part of the church property, it'd become an accessory use, and then that building could shift further to the east. To the south, it can't shift further to the south either way. There's a house there, and, and they have no intention of doing that because like what Mr. Rautsong said, there's some grading issues in the floodplain. They have to avoid all that anyways.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Holmesy. Any, any further comment from the commission?
You have one question, Mr. Holmesy.
One, Mr.?
There was a-
Mr. Lackey.
Do you want me to go-
Carport was not on the south, going back to the one on the south.
Yeah.
If it was not there, now they didn't do a carport, would they still be able to park a box truck there without the carport?
Next to the, next to the building?
Yes.
They would have to, there'd be the same screening requirements and parking requirements that we have for other, other vehicles. So not if it's, I believe, not if it's taller than eight feet. But I would have to double check that. But yeah, I mean, that, that's why I think the screening comment is a good one. I think that the, my main reasoning behind recommending the condition about getting rid of the non-enclosed areas for storage is, it's in an office zoning district, and outdoor storage areas as a part of an office use, conditional use probably aren't super appropriate. But if it, if it's heavily screened, and, I mean, I think, I mean, that could be an option. The question is whether or not a 4,700 square foot storage building is appropriate right here.
Is there anything in the zoning code that limits the size of the accessory structure for this use in a no office?
Only by the fact that, there is, but it, it, it's, it's a real general comment about, it shall be obvious, like, I can't remember the exact verbiage in it, but a standard accessory use, obviously subordinate and accessory to the established use. And it's not like a hard square footage number. The number that we've used for like a residential use, if you want to build a garage, is 80% of the footprint of the principal structure becomes, is the maximum amount you can have for storage, whether it's attached or detached.
Kind of get back to a question. Ken, did you, were you thinking like a parking pad that was not covered?
If you were allowed to park it there without a carport.
Yeah.
What makes the difference if there's a carport there?
It's a good question.
That was my question.
I see. I see what you're, and basically, I just want protection from, you know, the weather and that kind of stuff.
No, I get that.
And everything. And it's, I, you know, I, I just think that a snowplow truck and a box truck and a car trailer is better put over there where people can't see them than in the parking lot that we do business out of and families come and park at. So that's just my thought about why I want the carports on, on either side. So, thank you.
And that was one of the reasons. The, the carport on the north is much more hidden. In the case of the one on the south, unless there's like a, an immediate wall around it, it will be visible to people further to the south, at least initially. The carport to the north, I mean, that's like built into the hill. It's, the building shields it from-
We just combine both carports to the north and shift the enclosed parts to the south where, I mean, it's, you're using the, the grading and stuff then to, to help screen it. So I'm-
That, I mean, that, that could be something that would help. I think it would need to be heavily screened, but that is something that would at least, at least make sure there's a, there's a brick wall on the south side, plus the buffer yard, as opposed to a buffer yard, a carport that might have salt bins and a, a snowplow in it.
Except what would be more objectionable to people to the south, seeing a building or a carport?
Well, I think it's what's under the carport. I think a brick wall just, it would, it would look like a house.
Okay.
A carport that's 36 feet deep with a snowplow in, it's probably not something standard for, and that was kind of the main. I didn't cover it super well. This discussion's been better than what, how I covered it in the report, but that was kind of the staff thought about those carport comments. But it might be possible to shift that to the north or have a.
Okay, last, last call. Any more comments or questions from the commission?
It just sounds like there needs to be more discussion.
I, I agree, I agree. So let's, let's have a motion to close the public hearing portion.
So moved.
Oh, sorry.
Chairman?
Sorry?
We still have some.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I didn't see you.
I was chickening out, but.
Ah, thank you. Please give your name and address.
Joyce Gressner, 4070 Woodman. And my property does butt up to Mr. Rautsong's property from the, on the south side. And you had the question of would I rather see the plower, a brick wall? I guess I'd rather see a brick wall, but it's kind of hard to say because these plans are not finalized yet. So I think I'll have more to say next time around.
Okay.
But I do, I am concerned. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else out there wishing to come forward? Mr. Rethman, yes?
Yeah, you know, we've heard discussion about potentially adding on additional parking, which based on the, you know, conditions you're describing in my, I guess, you know, to me, it makes sense that we sort of look to evaluate what that might be. You know, there's discussion about moving the building to 10 foot off the side and flipping some things. So I guess where we're, we're probably getting ready to head here is that I, I think we need a little more refinement of, of a plan. That's a little closer to what will satisfy the zoning as well as your needs and, and, and give the, the neighbors then something sort of more concrete to, to review. I, yeah, I, I think to have an accessory building on site makes sense for your, you know, everything that you're sort of saying. I think we're, we're, we're getting there. We're just, based on, I think, some of the ideas here that we have, we just need to see a little refinement. That's it.
Well put. Okay, now, anybody else? Last call. Ready on the right, ready on the left? Okay. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Do we actually want to close the public hearing or we want to continue it?
Actually, thank you. We should continue the public hearing till the next time we address this.
Yeah, and that, the one thing that I mentioned and I put letter B under the recommendation here.
Thank you.
We won't have a meeting the third Monday this month. It's a federal holiday. And then the first Monday in July is July 3rd, which we virtually never have a quorum and I won't be in town. So the next meeting is July 17th.
July 17th.
2023. And normally what we do, if, if something is, if something is continued, we'll send out, Connie, correct me if I'm wrong, do we send out the letters again?
Set it for a date.
Okay, okay.
Say that July, the next meeting, next public meeting, which would be July 7th.
July 17th, which would give plenty of time to.
That gives you, gives staff plenty of time to work with Mr. Rautsong and, and company to get this all hammered out. And one question I would have for Mr. Holmesy is, in these discussions, do we want to include in the discussion the additional 25 parking slots that Mr. Rautsong brought up?
I.
Just to make it.
Yeah, I think that's a, that would be considered another major change.
I mean, do we want to do that at this time or, or?
Yeah.
I think we should.
I think we should include that discussion for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's pretty different from the, the legal ad that went out. And number two, it changes the, it could change the plan quite a bit because this was kind of viewed as, it's not open to the public. It's just purely a storage building that kind of will sit back in this corner. It can be heavily screened. Parking can be, can meet those expectations as well, but it might change what we're looking at quite a bit. And unless we're, unless we know what's being proposed, it's hard to make a decision or impose conditions or not impose conditions. So I think we should see the parking and met those carports. Talk to the, it sounds like they have already talked to the church about them replating that property to kind of allow the building to shift to the east. I think it makes a lot of sense to look at all those, all that stuff.
Okay.
At least in concept.
Okay, and I was thinking it'd be a good idea, but I didn't want this thing to spiral out of control and never get anywhere either. So, so, okay, so with that, we have a motion. We have an alternate motion. Mr. Rethman.
So are we keeping the public hearing open? I mean, does that affect then if it needs to be re-advertized if they choose to add the parking in? Or how do we, because they could also say, well, not at this time. I mean, depending on the urgency to try to get something complete.
I think for now it makes sense to keep it open.
Okay.
Just in case they say, well, we'll, we won't add the parking. We'll just keep it as a storage building and we'll kind of separate the additional parking. We'll tweak the plan based on the discussion we've had tonight. If they decide to add that, I believe that there's a, there's a little subsection in the fee schedule about read, if we need to re-advertise something, we have, I'll, I'll have to double check. But, and, and I can talk to the law department on how best to handle something like that, but I don't want to give bad information. But I think it makes sense to keep it open. Worst case scenario, the plan changes, we have to re-advertise. Then we just reopen, we open a new public hearing and then kind of close this one and.
Okay.
Go from there. Keeping it open keeps more options open.
All right. All right, Mr. Chair, I have a, a motion for PC dash 23 dash 010. 2100 East Stroop Road, a conditional use amendment approval. I move that we continue this case until our next regularly scheduled meeting, keeping the public hearing open. And that concludes my motion.
I think we need to state.
Do we need a date?
Yeah.
Next regularly scheduled meeting?
July 17th.
July 17th.
Okay, to July 17th, 2023, which was scribbled out on my motion, which is why I didn't read it.
At 7:00 PM in city council chambers at 3600 Schreier Road.
Okay, there you go.
There's, there's no mistake. Okay, thank you, Mr. Reth, oh, wait, that's a motion. We need a second. So it's been moved and seconded to continue this on July 17th, 2023. Mrs. Gaul, would you take the roll?
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yeah.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes. Moving on. Thank you very much for all of your input.
Just the plans that you have after the tweet.
And I do remember that a lady.
Well, I'm looking at her house. It's 35 feet off the property line. Her house is way up here.
Yeah.
It's a long way from her house.
It's getting me 7:59, 8 o'clock. Wow. It's only an hour?
Only one out of all the days.
Seems like it's been two hours.
Thanks for coming. All right. Sorry about that. Just wanted to give everyone the next steps on how to contact me.
Okay, moving on to the fourth item on our agenda. We have a request for a subdivision slash lot split at 2004 Boulevard, planning case number 23 dash 012. And again, we'll begin with staff's presentation. Mr. Holmesy?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. This is a fairly unique request, yet it's also fairly straightforward. The property at 2004 Boulevard is the property kind of at the southeast, or I'm sorry, the southwest corner of the intersection of Four and Woodman. It contains the structure that previously housed the operations of Tenneco. Before that, General Motors, before that, or no, I'm sorry, before that, Delphi, before that, General Motors and Delco before that. So this is the record plan on the screen now. What they want to do is take that existing parcel and essentially, for the most part, create a separate lot that contains just the building and some of the surrounding area. And there's a aerial image of the property. You can see the main building. That red outline is the existing lot line of the property, the parcel in question. The entire parcel is zoned BP or Business Park, which is our industrial zoning district. The entire parcel is in the I or Industrial Pattern District. And I'll go over the proposed lot lines now. So here's the existing lot line outlined in red there. What they want to do, it's kind of hard to see there, but they want to take the, they want to split off a sep, a separate lot that contains mainly the building. And this is a little bit hard to see, but I included it. And since this is kind of unique, staff requested that the applicant give us a exhibit that shows the building footprint on the record plan, and that's that blue outline on the screen here. And kind of uniquely from a zoning perspective, since this is in the BP zoning district, there's no minimum lot size and no minimum lot frontages. So as long as there is suitable access provided to the site, they can meet these, both the subdivision and the zoning requirements without having any lot frontage at all. The only, when you look at the pattern district, the I pattern district, there's no minimum setbacks for side yards unless it abuts a residential use. And this does not abut a residential use. So the only, the minimum setback they have to provide is five feet enough for the buffer yard. And they are providing a minimum of five feet around the entire building. In some areas, it's quite a bit more than that. And in order to provide access to the site, we did have a meeting with the applicant, with our chief building official and with our fire marshal, dealing with ensuring that there is easement access provided to the site. And today, there's an existing 25 foot wide access easement that touches Four, kind of highlighted in the dashed green line there. We asked them to include a deed reference for what established that easement on the record plan. And they've done that. They just need to add the deed number to it. And then on top of that, we asked them to provide official easements for ingress and egress from both Four and Woodman. And that orange dashed line that comes from Four, which is kind of on the top of the screen here, that's where, there's an existing drive aisle that touches Four and kind of enters the site from there. So they're proposing a 50 foot wide ingress, egress easement that'll be established as, as a deed. That'll be recorded and they have to add the deed reference to the record plan before the planning commission will provide signatures on the record plan. And the second one comes from Woodman, and this is, this is actually the main access to the site that was used by Tenneco for their employees and their trucks. So they're officially establishing an ingress, egress easement from Woodman into the subject site. The one issue from Woodman is they cross a rail, a railroad right away. So there's a gap in the easement and the goal is to eventually get an official written agreement from the railroad for that to cross the railroad as well, but that's, takes a long time to do and they weren't able to do that. But the easements they have provided, the easement that exists and the easements they provided are sufficient to provide access to the site. On, and another unique aspect to this request is, comes from the building code. Because the zoning, when we were initially reviewing this, we kind of were thinking to ourselves, a five foot setback is not enough for the building code. Because if they wanted to come in and build a structure, they'll need to provide more than a five foot separation between the existing building and a proposed building. There is a way within the building code to create a no build easement along the perimeter, and that's what these orange dashed lines represent. It's a 30 foot no build easement that will be a part of this record plan that will be established along the edges of the, of the edges of the parcel that will include the building, or the, I'm sorry, the edges of the parcel that won't include the building. And our, they'll have to get the approval of our chief building official before the planning commission provides signatures. And I did share this with him. And what they have so far appears to be sufficient to meet the building code, but I want to have one more review of it when the Mylar comes in. But those are the two very unique aspects of this record plan. So again, from the zoning perspective, there's no minimum lot size or minimum frontage requirements for the BP zoning district. There's no minimum side yard setback requirements for the I pattern district unless you're abutting a residential use or district. So the only real setback requirement is to provide the five foot setback for the buffer yard and they meet or exceed that along all the edges of the property. And when it comes to the subdivision standards, which staff reviewed the record plan per the subdivision requirements, they meet all of the requirements except that they need to certify the record plan and the requirement that all easements be shown on the record plan. And that includes the deed references for the ingress, egress easements and also a final review for the building, for the no build easement and any comments that the County Environmental Services has about this record plan. So staff does have a recommendation, but before I get into that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. There is, the engineers here this evening, if there's any questions that I can't answer. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Does anyone on the commission have a question for Mr. Holmesy?
I do not.
Okay, no questions?
Not regarding the plat, no.
No, okay. I just had one question. Maybe I missed this somehow, but what, what's the, what's the rationale for the lot split? Why are they doing this?
There is, I don't know all of the details. I know that there's an interest in getting the building on kind of a separate parcel by itself. I don't know all the reasoning behind that. I'm assuming there's some kind of financing reason behind it, but I don't know all the details. The engineer might have some more information that can be shared. But that was our initial question as well.
Yeah, I was just curious because it seemed like doing a lot for what, what purpose. But is, is the applicant here present? Okay, would you please come, is this Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Please come down and give your name and address.
Good evening. Tim Dwyer with Leesman Engineering, 4820 Glenway Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio. Thank you, Chairman, for the opportunity. Ryan is correct. It's a lender requirement for the loan that we put the building on its own separate property or parcel. And it is a lot of work to achieve that. You guys are correct.
Yeah, I was puzzled by that one. Does anyone have a question for the applicant?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. While this is not a public hearing, the commission is interested in, to hear from anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on the matter. So if anyone wants to come forward, please do so. Seeing none, we'll ask for staff recommendations.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. The recommendation by staff is that the planning commission motion to approve the record plan included in case number PC dash 23 dash 012 with the following conditions, which must be met prior to the provision of planning commission signatures. Number one, the record plan must be officially certified by the surveyor. Number two, the, the two proposed 50 foot wide ingress, ingress slash egress easements be recorded and the micro fish references be added to the record plan. And number three, the no build easement be reviewed and approved by Kettering's city architect.
Thank you, Mr. Holmesy. Any final questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, I believe Mr. Rethman has a motion.
I do, Mr. Chair. I have a motion for PC dash 23 dash 012. IRG Kettering One LLC is a plat subdivision. Whereas an application has been received from Tim Dwyer of Leesman Engineering, agent for the owner of 2000.
from Tim Dwyer of Leesman Engineering, agent for the owner of 2004 Boulevard, Dayton, Ohio, 45420, requesting approval of a subdivision of 2004 Boulevard. The subdivision would take one existing parcel and platted into two lots containing 55.842 acres. And whereas this request constitutes approval of a final record plan for the newly described lots, and whereas the planning commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, I move that the applicant's request for approval of a final record plan for the IRG Kettering One LLC record plan be approved with the following conditions, which must be met prior to the provision of planning commission signatures. Number one, the record plan must be officially certified by the surveyor. Number two, the two proposed 50-foot wide ingress slash egress easements be recorded and microfish references be added to the record plan. And number three, the no-build easement be reviewed and approved by Kettering's City Architect. This concludes my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rathman. Do I have a second?
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this. Mrs. Gahl, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes. Moving on to the fifth item on our agenda, we have a request for a zoning map amendment for 2119 East Dorothy Lane, planning case number 23 dash zero, one, three, and this is a public hearing.
I'll send you the signed motion tomorrow.
And again, we'll begin with staff's presentation.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. This is a familiar corridor of town for rezonings. This is a very straightforward request. It deals with the property highlighted on the screen there, outlined in red. It used to contain the Aaron's Rents business. It's directly to the west of the property. That used to contain Throck Morton's that was rezoned from EDO 14 to business about a year and a half ago. It's in the same corridor as the little shopping center that was rezoned a few months ago, and on the same corridor as the former Firehouse Subs, now City Barbecue that was rezoned about six or seven months ago. Similar to those requests, it's, it was triggered because the owners of this property have found a potential user for the site, but it needs to be rezoned out of the EDO to allow that project to move forward. So the existing zoning is EDO 14, outlined kind of in yellow there is the property. What they're proposing to do is rezone it to B Business, as has been done four other times on this corridor in about the last year and a half. So this request really meets the exact same criteria that those recommendations met, that those rezonings met. So the first review criteria is in section 1153 dot 12 dot 6 dot A of the Kettering zoning code. And no map amendment shall be recommended for approval to a specific and, recommended for approval prior to a specific finding and documented finding of at least one of the following. Letter A is that the, the proposed amendment is consistent, consistent with the City of Kettering's comprehensive plan and with the intent of the zoning code, or such consistency as being sought concurrently. And this is in the sub-regional commercial area of our comprehensive plan. Within that area, within that area of the, of the future land use plan, the recommended uses are retail, office, residential, and civic uses that are larger in scale and serve the entire community. And the B Business zoning district being sought as a part of this application would be consistent with this part of the comprehensive plan. So this criteria is met by the request, and a finding can be made that it meets that criteria. The other criteria are not applicable to the request. The first one is that there has been a change in demand for land that alters the information upon which the official zoning map is based. This is not applicable. Letter C is that a study commissioned or conducted by city staff indicates that there has been an increase in demand for the land in the requested zoning classification. This is also not applicable. Letter D, the proposed use cannot be accommodated by sites already zoned in the city due to a lack of transportation or utilities or other similar development constraints, or the market to be served by the proposed use cannot be officially served by the geographic location of the existing zoning districts. Not applicable. And then letter E, there's an error in the zoning code text, or the official zoning map, or the official development pattern map as enacted, and that standard is actually not met by the request. And then the next area that needs to be reviewed in the zoning code for all rezonings is in section 1153 dot 12 dot 6 dot B. And the planning commission shall consider each of the following matters, matters based on the evidence presented to it when reviewing rezoning applications. Issue number one, the extent to which the proposed amendment and the proposed use are in compliance with and, and deviate from adopted plans, goals, and policies, as noted within the analysis of section, of section 1153 dot 12 dot 6 dot A dot one dot A. The proposed amendment is compliant with Kettering's comprehensive plan, and that's included in, as an attachment with the staff report. Additionally, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the city's goal to rezone economic development overlay districts to conforming zoning districts. Issue two, the suitability of the property in question for the uses permitted under the proposed zoning or for the development requirements under the proposed development pattern. The property is well-suited to the uses permitted within the B zoning district, and many of the uses that are currently permitted on the property today will, will remain permitted should the property be rezoned to B. So this standard is satisfied. Standard two, the adequacy of public facilities such as transportation, utilities, and other required public services to serve the proposed use. The site is well-served by public infrastructure. The site is located near the intersection of Two Arterial Streets, East Dorothy and Woodman Drive, and utilities and, and other required public services are fully developed and currently in place. So this requirement is satisfied. Requirement four, the effect of the rezoning on surrounding uses. There will be no tangible changes to the surrounding uses. The rezoning will broaden the allowable commercial uses on the property, but not in a way that would be out of character with the surrounding land uses, which include a grocery store, fueling station, and fast food restaurants. So this requirement is satisfied. And number five, the effect on the proposed rezoning on the economic viability of existing developed, developed and vacant land within the city. The proposed rezoning impacts no tangible changes to the surrounding uses, or I'm sorry, that part of the report I should have modified. In terms of the changes to the viab, to, I'm sorry, this part of the report's kind of confusing. Anyways, there will be no negative impact on the economic viability of the existing development vacant land within the city. This rezoning really just follows the city policy of taking properties out of the EDOs and putting them within a comparable base zoning district. So this requirement is satisfied. And finally, the last condition, the planning commission shall not recommend the adoption of a proposed amendment unless it finds that adoption of such an amendment is in the public interest and not solely for the interest of the applicant. And upon examination, this requirement can be satisfied. The city's goal with economic development overlay districts is to rezone them to one of the 11 recognized zoning districts. This will allow the expedient, efficient, fair, and uniform application of the zoning code for the property moving forward. So this requirement can be satisfied. So there's no one here this evening on behalf, on behalf of the applicant, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Holmesy. Does anyone have a question?
No.
No, no questions. I have none either. So since this is a public hearing, is anyone in the audience wishing to come and address the planning commission on this matter? Seeing none, I'd like to ask for staff recommendations.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. The staff recommendation is that the planning commission recommend that the application be granted as requ, wait a minute. Ignore that. This presentation is incorrect, but I have the staff report, I have the motion right, the recommended motion in front of me. I apologize about that. So the staff recommendation is that based upon the evidence presented and the analysis and the findings made within this staff report, staff recommends that the request for approval of a zoning map amendment to rezone the subject property from EDO number 14 to B Business be forwarded to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holmesy. Last chance, any questions for Mr. Holmesy? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Gahl, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes. And Mr. Lackey, I believe you have a motion.
I do. I have a motion for PC dash 23 dash oh, one, three, 2119 East Dorothy, a rezoning from EDO number 14 to B Business. Whereas an application has been received from Vaughn Benson, AIA of FMS Architects Incorporated, 995 West Third Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, 43212, requesting approval of a rezoning from EDO number 14 to B Business of the property addressed 2119 Dorothy Lane. And whereas the planning commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, and held a public hearing on June the 5th, 2023, and whereas this request constitutes approval of a rezoning from the EDO number 14 zoning district to B Business, and whereas the planning commission adopts the findings of fact presented by staff in their report, which is incorporated into this motion, I move that the applicant's request for approval of a rezoning from EDO number 14 zoning district to B Business, as shown on page two of the attachment B, existing and proposed zoning map be recommended to city council for approval. End of motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mrs. Gahl, would you call the roll?
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes. Motion is passed. Moving on to the last item on the agenda is audience participation. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the commission on any item not on tonight's agenda, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll move on to other business, the signing of plats.
Uh, we have one plat for, for signature tonight.
Thank you. Any communications and reports?
Uh, I don't have anything major, but I know at the last meeting, there was a question about filling the vacant seat on the planning commission. Those interviews are starting, I believe, this week, and I think there's six people being interviewed to fill that position. So hopefully that'll be filled soon.
That's, that'll be very good news. Thank you. And finally, planning commission comments.
Oh, I have nothing.
None at all? You can't make something up? Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Rathman?
No questions or comments.
And I have none.
I have one quick
Oh, Mr. Holmesy, yes.
Quick comment. I just wanted to thank everyone for their comments on that item that was continued. That was a very good discussion. I, I think that the applicants appreciated the interest in making sure it's done right, as did the neighbor. So I, if anyone's watching, that's, come to the meeting if you have any concerns and comments about a potential project. Sometimes things come up at the meeting, and we appreciate those comments and discussions because it can lead to something like that where the plans might be modified or tweaked based on discussion, so.
And I have to commend Mr. Holmesy, you earned your pay today at this meeting.
Oh, I think, I like, discussions like that are great. I, I mean, I know that everyone here has a lot of experience on the planning commission, but I don't want anyone to be hesitant to add a comment or anything like that. Just say it, we can discuss it. If we need to, if we need to continue something, we'll continue it. We want everything to be done right when it's done, so we don't have to come back later and modify something or, so, no, it was a great discussion.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all of your attention to the minutia and detail, which sometimes gets lost in these things. Okay, with that, our next regularly scheduled meeting is going to be, I had June, but it's going to be July 17th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. And with that, this meeting is adjourned, the time is 8:25 PM Eastern Time.